All right, let me call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Legions. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, do a roll call please, Mark.
Me? Charles Barkaw.
Here.
Keith Dune.
Here.
Brooke Benedict.
Here.
Mark Walter.
Here.
Alan Campbell.
Here.
Tona.
Here.
Lois Bailey.
Here.
Mal Locke.
Here.
John Walters, Constance.
Jenna Carpenter.
Here.
Do you have a quorum? As for a motion to approve the agenda, or any changes or adjustments you'd like to make to the agenda?
Approve the agenda as presented.
Second one, Mr. O'Malley?
No.
All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
This time I'll open for public comments. Want to make a public comment at this time? Staff comments, anything more that you want to mention?
No.
Jordan?
So, any comments?
Yeah.
He'll be speaking shortly. All right, consideration of the April 16, 2025 meeting minutes. Send out an email with the agenda.
I move to accept the minutes set present. Or.
Motion, Mark, is Walter's support of Mr. Badu. Any discussion? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? No one finished business, so now it's a discussion item, action item one, Facility Director's update, and he's not here, so I guess you're doing it.
I guess so. All right. Um, I don't have his agenda or anything, um, so, but, um, as far as the pit toilet demolition, uh, we're still waiting on Cal. They were backed up because of the frost laws, um, so I'm hoping here in the next couple of weeks. The goal was before Memorial Day, but no, it doesn't look like that's gonna happen. And then it looks like Novak Masonry is ready to pour the pads as soon as they get those, the pit toilets demolished. Um, as far as any other projects, um, the tree planting of Veronica went great. Uh, we had about, I think around 20 people come out, um, finish about a couple hours, so they're still standing, so that's a good sign. Yeah, other than that, um, everything else seems to be going all right.
Is there some length of time you have to allow soil to settle from the pit toilets being filled in before you're gonna put the pad down?
Uh, not that I know of, I'm, um, I believe that they're good to go as soon as, um, Cal gets out there, so.
Have we set any of the toilets yet in any of the parks?
Uh, yes, there are porta potty, porta potties at every park, so there are bathrooms there. Any other questions?
Any other questions for? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Next item on the agenda is the four farm bathroom proposal, renamed by Mr. Steve Steyer from Lillenau County Historical Preservation Society, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve Steyer, I live in Empire Township, and I'm representing Lillenau County Historic Preservation Society and the Joint Barn Use Committee. Thank you all for giving me a spot on the agenda this afternoon. And I'm gonna do a presentation here that's gonna be partly history, uh, so we can know where we've been, some of the present, where we, so where we know where we are and what the future might be. And this, this is the first time, I think, I've been in front of most of you, so.
Just talk for a second, are these mics working in front of him?
Is there a red light on?
No.
On the front?
The green light's on.
Air mic.
It's backwards, I don't know.
Okay, go proceed, Steve.
I believe so, I, I think mine, it sounds like they're, yeah.
I'll just talk about. Lillenau County established a four farm barn in 1901 with the purchase of the Burke Farm. About one mile west of Maple City in 1911, the existing barn burned down and was replaced by the current Gamble Bank Barn. Farming ceased in the 1950s and little maintenance was performed on the barn after that while several serious structural problems arose. Over the 50 intervening years, the county commission gave little attention to funding to maintain the barn. It was clear that they thought it was a liability. The barn was allowed to deteriorate to the point that a citizens committee, citizens committees were formed to attract interest in the barn. As early as 2002, Lillenau County citizens groups formed and were meeting, uh, to save the barn and determine a use for the four farm barn. There was strong commitment from this committee to save the barn. The meetings came up with many uses, but all suggested uses that required public access, having people inside the barn. Citizens that participated between 1902 and 1903, I'll just read some of the names. You'll probably remember some of them, Barton Hagan, Duval, Katie, Noonan, Stephens, Hayes, Welch, Watoski, Gill, Blackenbush, Van Dyke, Gala, Havens, and Reinhardt. Specific uses were mentioned, um, during this series of meetings, and some of those activities that they thought they would like to see happen at flea market, talent shows, farm market, cultural museum, a teen center, dances, and become part of the Lillenau Historical Museum. And Glenn Noonan, we have minutes from these meetings, and Glenn Noonan said he wanted to see it be a farm museum. These suggestions make it clear that the county residents at that time wanted the barn saved and used for public assembly as no specific use was no, never determined because clearly the county would not be a funding source. Interest dwindled, and after another 15 years of deferred maintenance, the County Board of Commissioners advertised to have the building removed. As a revolt, as a result, Steve Steyer, Barbara Sipker, and Laurel Jarris established the Lillenau County Historic Preservation Society, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization specifically to save and reuse the barn. LCHIPS, that's the Lillenau County Historic Preservation Society, and, and the county began negotiations that resulted in a lease of 25 years for the barn and the surrounding two acres, and was signed on March 2nd, 2018. Since that time, we are on our fourth county administrator, our third Building Safety Department head, and second Parks Commission Chair. Um, since 2018, LCHIPS has raised and spent nearly $65,000 to complete structural repairs, uh, for the lease arrangement that we have. Beyond that lease requirement, we have had the barn roof painted, roof and barn painted. The original cupola and re, and lean to is reconstructed and installed. And we've actually removed four large dangerous trees on the property. LCHIPS volunteered, have donated hundreds of hour, volunteer hours. We applied and received a State of Michigan Historic Marker and have been awarded Barn of the Year from the Michigan Barn Preservation Network. In short, we believe that we have transformed the barn from what was thought of as an eyesore and liability to something the county can be proud of. The lease we signed in 2018, the first page states, "Lease shall rehabilitate and maintain the premises, shall collaborate with Parks Recreation Commission to ensure the same are incorporated into the Lillenau County Park system." Lease agreement also states, "A six-person commission, committee will be created to determine the specific use of the barn and any related activities." And it also specified who we're gonna be on this committee. It's a six-person committee, uh, three people from the, representing the county and three people representing our organization. From the beginning, LCHIPS has held the idea of using the barn as a place for recreational, educational, and entertainment events as they believe that this would, sincerely that this would be the best use, uh, of the barn. We have agreed that larger private events such as weddings or family reunions would not be appropriate and not allowed. Only low-key public educational entertainment and agricultural events will be allowed. As required by the lease, the barn committee was formed in 2022 to determine the use of the barn as specified in the lease. Members of the committee selected Steve Steyer as the chair and has discussed several specific uses at length and determined again that the best desired use will be to, will require having people in the barn. Earlier during 2020 or 2021, I was told that Casson Township would let us, let us use porches for events inside the barn. During early 2023, LCHIPS planned for a public event in the barn, and at that time, the Lillenau County Building Safety Department let us know that proper bathrooms must be installed before we were allowed to hold events inside the barn. Both LCHIPS and the Barn Use Committee fully believe that the county must take some of the factual responsibility for this facility that, that they own and will benefit from any improvements. In the last barn committee meeting, we were discussing some fees, financial responsibility for the facility that, uh, missed a spot. In the last barn use committee meeting, we were discussing how the committee would implement the determination of specific use, usage of the barn and any related activity. That's what we wrote out of our lease. Uh, member Godbout stated that the Parks Commission does not determine specific usage, usage in the parks. LCHIPS had expected that the full joint barn use committee would participate, and we need to resolve this issue. If the committee does not determine the specific usage of the barn and any related activities, LCHIPS will go ahead on our own to determine specific uses, but will request appropriate revisions to the lease. Then I have some questions here for you folks, if, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, we'll decide whether we, um, what we do with the lease. Does this commission, will you have any suggestions how to, to raise money for the bathrooms? When would you like to hear from, reporting from us? And you have any thoughts or suggestions for us? Uh, this, I, I handed this out, it's a colorful thing. This is a draft, so, uh, you can take it home with you and look through it. And behind it are four, four other sheets that we'll talk about in just a little bit. This one is an overhead view of the four farm, farm set. And we think this is about 1920 because of the, instead of being red, barn is white, and the silo came in about that time. The, the next old photograph is a close-up of that photograph, and it shows over here on the right side, this is the chicken coop that used to sit right in front of the barn. And then the last two pages, hope you have two pages, there's a drawing of a standalone bathroom that has a, oh, the picture here has a monitor roof chicken house, chicken coop. And the drawings from the architect, what we've tried to do is replicate that same roofline in a smaller building, and the last sheet we should have shows where the placement of that building will go. Well, that's all I have for you.
Okay, thank you, Steve, for that part. Let me just go back to something you were talking about. My comment at the meeting was essentially, it was, it was for your committee to more come up with what the programming would be within the barn subject to a policy made by the six members of the committee that would state the, the, the options that were possible and those things that were not possible, such as alcohol was not permitted in the barn at any time. So there was stipulations that the committee would put together that would manage what activities you could do in the barn, but we weren't gonna exactly tell you what to do.
Okay.
That was my point.
All right.
So really, the programming's part of the project would be coming from your, your group as opposed to the six-person board determining what programming is. So that just clarifies my position on that.
What would happen if we decided to do something that you, that you didn't approve of?
Well, that's what we need to talk about in the six-member committee is what
Okay.
you can do that is, is approved and can be approved, not.
Okay.
I'm saying we're not totally out of the picture.
Right, okay, good.
If you wanted to do something in the barn that we, you know, totally couldn't be done or shouldn't be done, then we would decide we wouldn't do that.
Okay, well, I'll call another meeting, this, you know, as soon as I can, then we'll hash that out.
But on the subject of the standalone bathroom.
Yes.
Has that been run before the Building Safety Department to see if they would allow it?
Yes, we have tentative approval.
How far from the barn the building has to be?
Yeah, I forgot how far, but it's closer than the maximum.
Is your committee, is your committee on the front of this brochure? The names of your, your six member were, were on that committee?
Who's on that committee? Uh, Charles?
From the Park Commission is myself, Lois Bailey, and Mark Walter.
Okay.
The three members from the Parks Commission. And the three members from you are you, yourself and two others.
We've gone through some additions to our board of directors, so it's likely there'll be different people. But I will call that committee as soon as we get together.
Yes, um, my question is, when does the lease expire? And what are the options when the lease expires?
Uh, lease was signed?
In 2018.
I forgot already. I think there's something like 18 years left on the lease, so that's a good, good amount of time.
Yeah, when, when the lease expires, then what, what happens with the property?
As far as I know, there's no provision for that.
If I extensions to the lease.
And they, and his group can actually terminate the lease early with a certain number of days notice.
Right, well, both, both sides can do that.
Did you get an estimate from the architect for what the cost of the
No.
standalone building would be?
Not yet. The architect won't do that. I'll have to go to Perseidy Builders to get the approximate amount of money.
I mean, my follow-on question is, what, to, how much would LCHIPS wish to, to kick in towards the cost of the building and whatnot? If you are willing to do anything?
Um, the way it stands right now, we're gonna have to raise all the money.
Um, I mean, one thing, one thought I had going forward possibly is we determine if in fact, in this, the building of the standalone bathroom and what it entails, would be possibly covered by any state grants that we might apply for?
What grant?
Any state grants, like?
Uh, the DNR grant, I don't think will.
I mean, I'd like to have that affirmed determination by somebody who knows grants, because I do. Because if there was a state grant, we could apply for like a passport grant, then could we actually use whatever amount you were willing to contribute as the match for that grant? And leverage your money for the grant from the state? Now, the next application date for anything from the state grant is April 1st of next year. Yes.
I, this is not, I just wanted to, this is not a park, is it within the Miles Cameron Park boundaries?
Yes.
Okay, but it is a lease, which kind of creates as an island within the park, and as I understand, we relinquished, uh, we relinquished, uh, a lot of say over what would happen on that property and entrusted it with, with a separate board. Is that a pretty good interpretation of? I, I remember where you guys ended up with it, as in the county board didn't want anything to do with it.
Right.
I mean, they, they're really on, on a pretty good path to, to dumping this thing, and as fast as they could get it out of here.
Right.
And you guys came to the rescue when you did that, and I, I get this feeling that, um, that you're feeling constrained, if you will, is that, I mean, I.
He's constrained at this point based on the decision by the Building Safety Department that there have to be physical bathrooms within the barn before he can have any groups, assembly of any groups of people within the barn for any period of time. That's what's restraining him right now.
Well, let me just give you my opinion. Um, I think you guys got a group of folks who are really willing to make this thing into something. And we've all been, I'm not saying, uh, Henry Ford Museum, but I am saying that you've got a, a group of folks who, who, well, I can, I can relate to this, maybe a little bit older, but still got a lot of energy. And, uh, and, and you had mentioned whether, uh, no alcohol and, and some things like that, and honestly, if you guys wanted to have a reception there, this is my opinion, it, because that's how, kind of how you raise money too. I, I got a lot of trust that you got in, in what you guys, in your visions, and I just haven't heard your visions. Um, and, uh, I understand why you'd be on your back, on the back of your, your, on your back feet because of this need to raise all the, you know, another, another round of money raising just to get to, to where you thought you were. But my thoughts are, I, I, I say, yeah, I'm glad you guys are there, and I say, you guys got a dream, and, and you can, and get yourself there, and I, I think we're, I speak for myself, right? All for.
Okay, thank you. We have worked hard, um, we've raised, we're fortunate to be able to raise a good amount of money to do the structural repairs. Uh, and now we're, we're finished with that, and now we want to go on with the very end of it and have uh, public use in the barn. So that's, that's.
You should be at the stage where you're, you're having fun, and hopefully I'll get there quickly.
The Building Safety Department has actually moved off their original position because of this allowing a standalone building within a very close proximity of the barn is a change from where their original stand is. Because they wanted bathrooms on both levels of the barn.
So.
Can I make? You may go ahead.
Okay, um, have you ever thought of doing something like a chalkboard at a facility there, and you have people write on it? What uses do you want to see on this property? And then you start to get a whole, you know, profile of, like, yeah, enthusiasm maybe. So it's impractical, but, you know.
The public has already done that years ago.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And, uh, and we've done it in our meetings over and over and over again, so we're well aware of all the possibilities of, uh, programs that could happen there, and we're just anxious to get started on them.
So when you build these bathrooms, do they have to have a tank and drain field system, like a full septic system?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what I, that's what I thought, and, you know, when, when I look at the historic pictures, you know, being the housing person that I am, I see housing. And I also know you're three miles away from Maple City and three miles away from Will Lake School, both places need housing. The road commission was anxious to find housing for four extra projects last year, and, uh, they were shorthanded because they can't, the sheriff wants housing. So if you were to build something that had a roofline like this open here, but only putting four units in it, we talked to somebody like John Stimson with those stacked units that he does, uh, is almost prefabricated. You would have a use for a, a full-on septic drain field and joint uses and share that cost.
And county property.
Pardon me?
And county property?
Exactly.
No.
Nope.
Well, we don't, it's not a decision we can make.
Okay.
I mean, it's something you'd have to bring in front of the board.
Exactly.
And, you know, but the value of property in Lillenau County is tempered in.
Well, that's exactly why you don't have any housing.
Wow.
But this had traditionally had housing on the property, so it's not like it's, uh, out in the middle of, you know, okay, never housing. Uh, there was housing there, as part of the, uh.
Yeah. Have you had any overtures from any groups wanting to use the building?
We've had a few inquiries, yeah.
Okay, what have you been telling them?
Um, wait and see.
I have a question, um, pardon me, I don't know the, the reason, the history of it, but, um, is there a way to use like mobile restaurants? Why does it have to be a permanent building, like the ones at Jacob's Farm?
Building, building safety, let me, uh, Steve, you want to answer that question ahead? I'm going, I think you discussed the, the mobile bathroom issue before, right?
Yeah, um, I, I don't, well, the reason that we are required to have them and no other parks is required to is because we have people in a building, none of the other parks have people inside of a building. So that's why we're required to have bathrooms. That answer your question?
That answers my question of why, but not really why.
Yeah, that seems very confusing.
Well, we have, we have private venues in the county that have, um, where it ends outside where they have functions inside of a bar, uh, the venue.
I'm gonna say, the building safety department's letter essentially stated because you're going to have assemblies of people within the barn, and the barn was not originally built for having assemblies of people in it. You have actually essentially changed the use of the barn. And that change of the use of the barn, according to the construction code, requires that you have bathrooms. This was their logic that flowed through the thing that said you can't have assemblies of people within the barn if you don't have any bathrooms. We, we fought, we, 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 Steve went before the petition or with a, an appeal that was turned down.
It, oh, it seems confusing to me because now we have this separate unit for the bathrooms. And why would that not open up other options for, um, those, what those facilities look like? And I'm not sure what that next step would be to find that and get more information about safety.
Again, the decision is within the hands of the building safety department.
Would you ask about a trailer, like one of the trailer bathrooms, if they use their wineries?
I don't know. We never asked the question. We started up, we started having, uh, spending a lot of money on an architectural design for bathrooms that were attached to it more. And that turned out to be too expensive, so then we went to the separate building idea. And we have, to answer that earlier question, we have gone to the building safety department and asked if that's appropriate or will they?
If they would accept a separate building?
Yes.
Mr. Star, did you go with the construction board of appeals also?
Yeah, we, because, um, I felt that we owed it to our donors to carry that all the way to a final end, and so that's why we did it. We didn't expect to get it reversed.
I'm surprised it, I mean, the board of appeal, I'm surprised.
Is, uh, this gonna be a four season, the four barn and restrooms a four season?
Or? No, just, just summer.
Just summer?
Yeah, six months of summer.
Because the mobile trailer restrooms, they even have winterization packages that you could practically use it, you know, three plus seasons, so that, you know, would be available.
If you had in the winter time, you would have, you'd be responsible to shovel a path from the barn to the unit, so that would be added.
Yeah, we don't, we're not gonna have the barn open during the winter time at all. Uh, we have been reporting to the, the county commissioners about once a year or so. Is there any desire of you folks having us report at any interval? You want us to come every month or every month or every once a year? What would your pleasure be?
Does anybody have an opinion about how we go forward from this point now that you have all the background information?
Are you giving any thought to the cost factor of a group using it? Or is there going to be established fees? What, what is your thought on that?
Um, in the lease, there's a word proprietary. And we're not sure what that means, and everybody I've asked doesn't really know what that means. But it says it cannot be used for any proprietary use. And what we've determined that that means is we can't charge for the use of the building. And so we're, we're not counting on that. We're, we're counting on going forward with donations. That answer your question?
I, I might add that if, if you feel that the wording on that lease is constraining you, feel free to make suggestions, uh, to changes to the lease. I mean, this is, this is, the original board, like I said, I'm not saying that they weren't combative or anything. It just wasn't, uh, wasn't something they really got into, that they, they felt akin to or a relationship with. But you may find a different view on the present county board, at least you would for me.
I think, yeah, I think common sense prevails to spend all that money to make it usable for something. There must be a way to, to come together, devise a solution between the county and your organization to put that barn to best use because otherwise it's complete waste. And, you know, this shouldn't be, it should be a, something the public can enjoy. And we should have a, a conversation with the current board as to how we might be able to fix that. I mean, leases can be changed. Um, and I guarantee you that it would, but I can think of a couple of votes that you probably have. So, you know, it doesn't make any sense for the county to, to have a piece of usable property for the citizens not used. So I would give it to your committee and decide, you know, what you want to do and come in, talk to the board and say, we would like to, to make this available to the public. And what can you do to help? Because we might be able to come up with a solution that's not cost prevented.
We have talked about, um, making some revisions to the, to the lease. And, um, it's, it's a matter of picking which administrator we find to go to.
Well, we've only got one now.
We've only one now.
It's time to do that, you know, I mean, I would, I would get together and bring it to the board and say, this is what we'd like to do. We'd like to be able to do this, you know, um, there might be a way to generate some revenue for future modifications out of property. And, uh, to, to remodel property so that it's usable and you can look at it, walk in it, and not do that is ridiculous. And I, you know, common sense prevailing, I think you could probably move forward with something. You have to ask, you know, because nobody on the board is gonna take any interest in acting for you or comment on that thing if you're not fully, um, engaged in, in wanting to do that. So you need to sit down and decide what you guys want to do. Do you want to hold a, a school dance there? Do you want to hold a veterans party? Do you want to do, do something like that? Boy, you know, that stuff can be done, but we need to get it with the board, get that lease cleaned up and move forward. Because, you know, there should be a way to use it to generate a little bit of money, to make the improvements that, make it a fully, sustainable building for the county, for the committee. So that, that would be my suggestion is you come to us and tell us what you want, what you envision. And then we'll, we'll shed your agreements that way. But I mean, seriously, that's, that's the, I'm being facetious, but you have, you know, I mean, if you don't come to us, if you don't ask, you'll never get a yes, that's for sure.
Is there, are there fenced in areas on the property around the building, like if you had animals?
I'm sorry?
Around the barn, are there any like fenced in areas, like if you had animals?
No.
Steve, did, did the building safety department give you in writings their acceptance of a standalone separate?
Yeah, I've got, our architect went and talked to him, and so I got a letter from him. I don't have it with me, but I got it.
Okay, I'm just wondering how building safety department documented their decision to him. I want to make that, we want to make sure that that's there. If they go back and ask Rebecca's question about a mobile bathroom unit being installed, that would go into a set. You know, we, we installed the septic side of it and this mobile unit is plugged.
Well, it could be a temporary thing until we.
Well, you mean it was a permanent thing and it's only there for spring, summer, and fall, and then out of there.
Yeah, and it's a part, so there's no reason we couldn't do something like that, but you gotta ask first.
They allow it at, uh, at commercial places, like, you know, with food, so that's kind of.
There's a barn on seventy two, they're using it for weddings. And they're limited as to how many weddings and so forth. I know they've got a lot of restrictions there. Is any thought of using the barn for weddings?
No.
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 County, county park policy doesn't allow for alcohol use anywhere on the county parks. That's, it's written right into the stipulation. So that kind of restricts what you can do in the barn as far as events that would probably want to have alcohol in at the event.
Unless you change the policy.
Unless you change the policy. I mean, the board can change the policy and say, yes, you can have alcohol on the county parks. I'm sure there's a whole liability issue that comes up with that with the.
Or, you know, or there's could be a, a change in the lease to lease the building to a, a third party or second, uh, that party. And say, this is your restricted things, we're not coming as a county park, but you guys can.
Then they have to have it.
But that's, you, you, we can't do that unless you come to the board and ask to redo your lease.
Then they have to have a liquor license.
If we were to.
Liquor licenses are, are pretty easy to get.
All right. Does anybody have any other suggestions for how Steve or we move forward with this? I mean, I would like to have the subject of, you know, if we're trying to narrow in on a separate building with a septic system, is there any grants available that we might apply for? Are we at that point or do you feel we're at that point?
Well, we can always ask.
I, I'm not sure your time schedule allows. I mean, I think you guys, if you're gonna raise money, you want to go out and raise some money. And, uh, if you, once you get your plan in place, and, and I think you've got support here, and I think you've got support beyond, just tell us your dreams and, uh, and I'm not saying we can make them, uh, true, but we can get out of the way of your dreams.
If we were to decide we wanted to make some modifications to the lease, uh, we've talked about that and we would, we would go to the county administrator first.
Sure.
Because that's where we started out.
Right.
In the very beginning, so we go to him and, uh, we hammer out whatever arrangements we could make and then it would go to the commission, commissioners.
Yes, that would be the process.
Okay, and you, this, this commission would support that?
Well, depending upon what changes you want to make to the lease. I won't say a blanket thing, but.
Bring, it won't make any difference, but this commission wants it to come in board, so I mean, that's how it goes.
Though we can make more additions, that's right.
Yeah, totally.
Yeah. Um, it strikes me that part of this is clarification of what exactly the, um, building safety department would consider as options there. I think that's, I think that's the first step. Because then we can go ahead with estimates and revisiting your lease wording. That's all part of that package.
I mean, we might have to amend the lease just to include the, the structure, the bathroom structure. Who's gonna maintain the bathroom structure? Who controls the bathroom structures? There's a whole lot of stuff involved with that if we actually put up that structure.
I know why we didn't, uh, really consider the, the mobile units, and that is because eventually this is gonna be taken over by the county completely. And we wanted something that was, um, permanent instead of, or temporary.
Well, in my job, um, I have, uh, I have researched these and the mobile restroom units. Um, and they are a lot nicer than they, they used to be. They're a lot more affordable. Um, I think that as like a wholesaler, you could get a nice, like, three unit, one to like sixty thousand dollars. You know, but that, I know that's a lot of money, but it's gotta be less than, you know, a septic tank and, uh, you know. Well, well, and I think that's, yeah, so, yeah. And you can rent them also.
First step is.
On Fort Myers Beach, we used portable bathrooms around a trailer and parked it in there. It was serviced by somebody else and we're fine.
Okay, any other questions for me?
Yeah, any, any other questions? I think we'll put a close on this subject and move on to our next topic.
Thank you.
Review of the parks financials, I asked this to be included. It used to be included in all of our meetings just so we could keep track of what, what the status was. Kathy gave us two different reports, one for the month of white April with the transactions. At each the bottom of each account, that's what those are all care of.
Anybody else, Steve?
Well, that one just shows all sorts of, for each, for each budget line item, it's all what's here to date on that thing. And the second one is the budget summary, essentially the budget actual summary. Right now, everything looks like it's in pretty good shape. We're only four months into the year and we're only really one month into the really big expenditures for parks around. So we'll see, have to see how it goes on as the year goes on a little bit. Um, but the focus on the capital outlays budget line item. I put together a document for you that has essentially a summary of where things are at this point. So essentially for the budget year twenty twenty five, that line item has a budget of ninety three thousand five hundred dollars, which was originally fifty five thousand dollars plus an additional thirty eight thousand five for a new tractor. It was originally put in the budget. With the accident at the Miles Camerly Barn, um, we repaired the siding, we got a new mower, we got a new tractor. And the total cost for both of those after insurance payout was left twenty one thousand nine hundred and sixty six dollars. So we went from a thirty eight thousand dollar expected cost for that line for that, those items to a twenty, essentially twenty two thousand dollar cost. Which leaves a total of seventy one thousand five, five thirty three. That's one of the budget that hasn't been expended. And I talked to Patrick and Josh and Jordan and the things that are in process right now are approximately fifteen thousand dollars that would hit that line item. Here, so the remaining amount in the budget would be fifty six thousand five. Now, in the last two years, we have gone and asked the board of commissioners for authorization to move the money from the general fund into the Parks and Rec Reserve Fund. That's why that thing is now a hundred and ten thousand, that's the next section. And that was fifty five thousand for each of those two years. So if we weren't gonna schedule any additional projects for the capital, capital outlays budget line item, I would, we would make a motion to go to the board of commissioners to move the remaining funds into the Parks and Rec Reserve Account. So that takes it out of Parks and Rec. Right now, normally your, your, your cap, your park, sorry, normally your general fund, if you don't use it in the year, you'll lose it, except this is a way that Richard Lewis for the last two years essentially made it so we can save, reserve our funds for some larger projects coming down the road. Okay? Uh, just to finish up, this, this, the, the middle column there, restricted grant match funds, we've got, we've got two grants outstanding. One of them has for fifty thousand dollars match for the Veronica Valley Lower Pond Loop Trail. And the other one for the Miles Camerly dis- upgrade and practice cost has a match of eleven thousand eight hundred and thirty. So we're setting that aside out of the hundred and ten, which would say there's still forty eight thousand in the reserve account that's under strict. Now, we're gonna come up to June's meetings, and there's an executive meeting in June. And we're gonna need to give recommendations to the county administrator for items to include in the twenty twenty six budget. So we're gonna need to go through our capital items, capital projects in the CIP, and any other items that you need to include in the twenty twenty six budget so we can identify them before the June meeting. and any other items that you need to include in the 2026 budget so we can identify them before the June meeting. I just want to make sure everybody had a status of where we were financially at this point.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Any questions?
You've given me this report.
Right.
23725. So some of these things have been accomplished, so we should come off of this, or they also?
No, all of these projects are still outstanding.
Okay.
Well, there were some, there were a couple that were in process, I think. There's another schedule that I didn't give you, which is actually a year by year.
Okay.
For, you know, five year, five year cash flow, which I didn't give you. I just gave you a project list.
Okay.
On that unrestricted fund account of 48 plus, what's the step that one goes through to get new projects considered? Does that have to go through the full county commission? Is it initiated on our end or?
Yes, we're going to initiate it on our end.
Uh huh.
So we have the project that we've identified in the CIP.
All right.
We will look at those, you'll, you'll need to look at those to reprioritize those if they're not in your, your, your committee's priority order.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
We have some estimates in there. All the estimates in the CIP are essentially ballfarts. So if somebody has an idea that a better estimate of what's included in the CIP, you can change the estimate. So what you're going to come back with is, here's the projects we were going to schedule in 2026. And here's how much we expect to need. And then we're going to have to make a determination of those projects, are they eligible for grants? Which is a new step in our process that hasn't been done a lot in the past. Okay, and what the deadline is for the grant. So it's, we're just going to work through the process that way. But ultimately, we got a list of projects for 2026. And the amount that may be available in 2026 could be the hundred, the remaining uncommitted, uncommitted funds plus any portion of the remaining 2025 money that we're not going to spend in 2025 that we move into the future, into the reserve.
Okay.
Any questions? We have somebody that's available or writing grants.
Then there's no one employed by the county who is, who has the title or the job description of grant writer.
I understand.
So right now, we haven't, we haven't been using Tiffany Smith, right? From an outfit in Grand Rapids to do our research and write grants. And that costs us about six grand per grant, or four to $6,000 is what that costs. So, you know, we need to go to Tiffany, say, here's a project we want to do, here's the scope of the project as we see it. Go out and find out if it's eligible for any grants. Let us know when we have to apply for the grant, and she actually makes up the grant application like she did for the Veronica Valley Loop Trail. The first thing I think we need to do is identify more projects we want to try to get done.
Charles, I didn't understand the, I guess, the calendar. Are you saying the county administrator wants our, our recommendation for 2026 projects by next month?
Yes, by June, we're going to, at the end of June, we need to provide him, him our list of priority projects and what, and amount of information. Then in July, accounting is going to give him, send out the budget packets for them, for everybody to fill out. So that's happening in July. Those will be due back, I think, by, almost by the end of July. So you only have about a month to do it. So we need to get the information to the administrator so he knows what to put into the budget packet when he gets it in July.
I apologize for asking any questions, but I'm new on the board.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Committee. What were the projects lined up for 2025?
The main one that was in there that we haven't done is the gazebo, it was gazebo refurbishment, which we've now pretty much settled on as a gazebo replacement. But I've been told that that may qualify for a grant whose application date would be April 1st of next 2026. So that whole project would get shoved off the year. That would be one of the priority projects for those seven apart to be in the, some money probably at the end of 2026 and most of the money in 2027.
Against the question I would ask, we don't want that to happen in the middle of the year. What I'm saying is we've got projects on, you're talking about for 2026, we don't want that shoved into 2027.
Right.
So we need to continue moving forward to get them done.
Yeah, once we get a list of our priority projects, the next thing I think is we want to do this grant analysis work. And if something's not going to be, be eligible for a grant or unlikely to get a grant, then we may go ahead and push the money, to spend the money in 2026. If it's going to be a grant, all the application dates are in 2026 with decisions at the end of 2026 and moving projects in the 2027. It's just the way the system works. Government works slowly. I realize I threw a lot of data at your fast, but any questions on what you've got for you? So let's move on to item four. Oh, actually, we just kind of talked over the budget guidance process and schedule. Essentially, our recommendations to the county administrators by, for the end of the June meeting. He will get the package in July, know everybody, put them together. And then the board of commissioners will have it on their schedule to do their workshops and whatnot, and go over each and every budget as I enter the process. And sometime around October, November, that making decisions about the budget for 2026 will be. That's less than I know the schedule to be. Okay, memorializing park bench donation procedure came up out of the Veronica Valley meeting.
But we have people that visit the park, most of the other two parks, that were interested in donating a bench as a memorial to a family member that passed. You, you got this from Charlevoix, this one here?
Yeah.
My question is, if this would have to be mounted on a Smith slab, you would just, you'd have a mother Smith slab that hold in place? And which would help with the maintenance. You wouldn't have to mow underneath it or anything else. But we also talked about it'd be a standardized bench so that if there was somebody that wanted a memorial bench at different park, then we would have this, apparently a contract from a builder, a provider in place where then they could then produce this bench.
May I ask, Courtney, what I?
Yeah.
To the benches, are the benches at Old Settlers fixed, fixed to concrete pads or anything like that?
I believe the stone one is, I believe.
The other ones are not.
The other ones are not.
Is that, how, how much extra maintenance work would it be to trim underneath the bench and keep that? There is it?
Well, the one I hold satellite is flush with the ground, so there's nothing.
Okay.
Underneath it. Except for the slab. But as far as maintenance goes, it's not going to be a lot of extra if it's just on normal dirt. So you want to worry too much about that.
There were some freestanding ones at old settlers.
Benches?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got the two, we've got the two stone benches which were donated.
Yeah.
But then we have these iron and wood lap benches all over the park.
Right.
And as far as I know, they're just sitting on the ground.
Yeah.
They're just on the ground, yeah, but they're chained to some rock, cement rock or something.
Yeah.
Then you've got to go to each area and decide how many benches do we want in each area? Because, you know, you, you're going to do a loop around Veronica Valley. You're going to want to venture every ten feet or every quarter mile. You know, because otherwise you, you're cluttering up a park with benches. So we need to actually think this out and see how many of these can we want? You know, it, it's simple with the veterans memorial wall or, or a parking lot like we have down at the memorial site, you know, because you bought, you bought a little brick, you put it in there with somebody's name on it. And, you know, we knew, we needed a thousand of those to make that work, you know? But we don't want a thousand benches. We maybe want 10 in each park. So then we'd have to figure that out and and decide what we want to do. There's a lot of steps to this you have to think about. I mean, it sounds great. But there might be too much of a good thing too. So we need to evaluate that first.
I mean, the, the question came up because you want to have a program to announce that we would like, we would accept donations of benches and try to get more donations, or this just the random person that comes up and says, I want to donate a bench?
Yeah, it's, it would be, of course, I don't know who would determine how many benches per park where they would go. Maybe the maintenance department would choose, you know, how many benches, like, you know, like we said, was that you don't want to have benches all over the place. You would have to have a predetermined place for a bench. And then as a bench, as somebody wants to purchase a bench as a memorial, say, okay, Veronica Valley has maybe 10 spots in the entire park. Okay, choose a spot. And then when the 10 are gone, then they're gone, no more benches.
You know, Old Settlers Park, you could have something looking at the water too.
That's where, that's where they already are. I, I don't know if it's for an over loaded way.
But it's, it's an opportunity to have a bench, speaking of Veronica Valley, have a bench for people that are birders, that birdie and other things. It's an opportunity to have a bench put there without the expense of the county.
And the benches would be more expensive, I imagine, than a brick. So I think that instead of a thousand people, there might be a more limited, you know.
Right.
Yeah. But true, we should have a director of how many, and how many of these parks are in the location.
It's not a bad idea. We have to put some more research in and hopefully make it.
So, I mean, I could ask for each committee to look at what their needs are. And Veronica Valley could decide, yes, we would like to have a bench, couple, three benches around the fishing pond. So someone, an older person can sit there while the kid fishes.
Yeah. So if you're improving the path around the valley, that would be the time to use your same site plan to find where the benches would be. So the choices are there. And I see on the park trail, sometimes the asphalt just creates a little path towards the bench and the bench sits beyond it. So it doesn't have to sit on a concrete pad.
Right, but, yeah.
So why doesn't each committee, park committee take it on as an action to essentially come up with a plan for park benches at their park?
If they don't want the expensive concrete, they could put mulch underneath to keep weeds from growing up. That's another option.
Kind of follow up that suggestion with, with the maintenance folks to make sure that we've got good areas chosen.
Yeah, the Veronica's, I mean, there's only going to be a certain amount of spots.
One of, one of the benches sadly at Old Settlers got moved down to the shoreline. Someone all the way down there and then it got destroyed.
You want them anchored where.
Anything else you want to talk about on this subject?
So when you're out driving around, take pictures of benches and how they're installed?
The ones that, the ones that are like old settlers, just the benches with the iron and the wood slats essentially. Or in some cases, I think they're faux plastic wood, something.
Right.
Those ran anywhere from $600 for a four footer to $1,100 for a six footer. Now, just the cost of the bench delivered by Amazon or whoever's going to deliver it.
Could you repeat those costs again?
About $600 for a four footer and $1,100 for a six footer.
For these places you showed, or?
Yes.
I, I I can envision each committee walking the park with a map and putting down exactly where they feel that this would be, that these would be good places. I, I do think that that's probably something that the committee should do rather than the maintenance department. And I can see asking somehow, maybe making a motion, but letting Patrick know, we need, we need to fill in these blanks as far as cost. And then maybe if he feels, the question to me in the maintenance department is, do they feel they have the time within their personnel to put these in, or do you, you feel better, or should we contract with an outside contractor? And then roll that into these particular prices. And then if you have these maps, when folks come to the county, you know, obviously this means a lot to them. It's a very personal thing for them to have a memorial bench. But you can point to, to your map and say, here's what we have left. We have five left. Which, which one do you want to have?
Yeah, and I, I mean, we could, we could publish this and make it readily known that this is a possibility.
I'd be careful about publishing price because it would change.
Yeah.
Well, you're going to have to set a price.
Put yourself in a corner.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where the, the, that's where Patrick comes in. You know, honestly, if the price goes up $100 midway through the year and you got to eat $100 for five bright benches, okay, that, that's fine. Maybe adjust it the next year. Probably going to start a little bit higher with some way over that.
And I think the idea that we put benches where the birders can sit and look for birds, because we're already mowing a path to certain spots which are designated birding locations at Veronica Valley. So if we happen to put a bench at the end of it, it sounds good to me. Right? Anything else on this subject? Need a motion on anything?
What do you think, George? Would Patrick, should we make a motion, ask? And I think Patrick knows, and you know, what we're looking for. But we just need some, we need some solid numbers next, when we next meet to plug in. And then if everyone reviews this policy and, and le- lenalizes it, probably rewrite it or just say, hey, that looks pretty good. We should change a few names, either one.
Actually, Lauren already sent an email to Patrick asking for the information. That you're looking for.
If, if you want, I could call Charlevoix and just see if they have problems or if someone else wants to do that. But it'd be nice to get ahold of them just to say, if you had to redo this, is there any tweaks you make or?
I mean, if we look at the current policy with, I'm not going to say policy because it's not actually big. We have a current process in, in New York County where someone came to, like Old Settlers, wanted to donate a memorial bench. So essentially, it ended up, the process was, you send us a letter specifying what you want to donate. We did ident, we did identify for the person the maximum size of a plaque that could be attached to the bench. And then that would come before us to recommend to the board of commissioners to accept the donation because the board of commissioners have to accept all donations. So we don't do it in this committee. We essentially just recommend to the board of commissioners that they accept this donation from so and so for the donation of a memorial bench valued at some amount of money probably. And that's, so that's the process we've laid out, although it's not, it's not written down anywhere that I know of. Other than in an email that I have.
I, I do believe it needs to be standardized. We, I've had someone else on hold for about eight months. While this has kind of been talked about and looked at and like that. And I've explained, and she understands that you don't want to just willy nilly start one and then put together a policy. You're better off putting together the policy and then accepting it.
The person who would do the initial draft of the policy, is that the administrator? Is that us?
Well, the bench is gonna be basically owned by the county.
Right.
So I would say the administrator would have to be involved for sure.
I mean, he just initiated the policy for two percent grant application, so I'm going on that model.
He's a policy guy. I, I, it, it's up to you guys, I mean, but really, I, my suggestion would be for us. To look this over, some of you guys haven't seen it yet, and, uh, and, and wait till next month. And, and then we can explain to the administrator what our thoughts are. And, cause there might be something in here that they may not appeal to, uh, folks on the, on the, on our commission, on our commission.
So. Do I have a motion to ask the administrator to initiate, initiate a draft of a policy for memorialized bench donations?
I'll make that motion.
Support your motion, supported by Mr. Badoo. Favor of your motion?
Can we have a discussion, please?
I'm sorry, discussion?
Um, I, I, if we, if we do that, we ask him to do that, I think we should forward him some ideas or thoughts. Rather than just an open forum. And so if this is what, if this is something along what folks want, then let's give him that as a structure. Where you.
I think we should also look at existing policies because we do have a policy regarding, um, acceptance of donations.
Right.
Existing.
Yeah.
And we might not need a formal policy. Given that any donation over a certain amount has to come before the V O C anyways. Um, and we have a form that pertains to the memorial, the veterans memorial, that could be easily adapted to. A bench donation. To keep it a little more simple.
So. Motion might not be to develop a policy, but research our policies, see what might fall in line with that.
You said research?
Research as well.
Your motion for research rather than?
Yes, I amend that my motion is to be for research instead of.
I accept it.
I accept it.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to see us have benches that withstand the weather, it'd be a lot better than summer. And in, in the research, as we suggested, benches not going to need a lot of maintenance.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? One favorite motion, may I? You opposed? Alright, so three park reports. Coming from Miles Kimmery, which is one of the reports.
Well, we didn't meet last month, but we're clearly gonna meet before the June meeting. We discussed several late topics that came up today.
Are there site plans for each of the parks?
Yes, there's conceptual designs in the five-year park plan for each of the three parks.
And.
They're in, they're in the back with a five-year, five-year plan. You see conceptual designs. You didn't have enough paper.
Well, that's a possibility. Okay, well, I'll go back and find it.
Anything for Old Setlers?
Yes, um, we did, and old settlers, uh, some committee did not meet last month, uh, but we will plan on meeting prior to our next. Person recommended as well, um, and I wanted to talk about seasonal preparation, appears the team has been actively working. On spring maintenance and landscaping, tasked the time for the park's peak usage season. Um, picnic areas are looking inviting and ready for use. Um, the grounds are in good condition following a tough winter. Um, the flowers have not been planted yet. Um, and then as discussed, the vault toilets are still there. And, um, infrastructure improvements were the continued discussion of replacing the gazebo and options. Being explored, and then I have a question for you, Jordan. Is there a plan to power wash the, um, the deck that's there by the monkey flowers?
Um, as of right now, they're not, but I can take a note of it and.
The stipulation would be it can be power washed with water only, so you want a seven five hundred P S I pump. But using water only because you don't want any detergent or anything getting down into the monkey flowers below.
That's all I have to report.
And Veronica Valley?
Alrighty, the kids fishing day is still on track. Looking forward to it, I believe we have everything all set to go. Uh, money's been approved and allocated for the fish. Um, the other thing is, friends of the park committee, we are going to be looking for. New York County citizens to be part of a citizen or a friends of the park to give input. Um, this was actually suggested by a former parks member. And so we're gonna maybe roll that out hopefully during either the fishing thing or some other time. So we're looking for some sort of a, a banner, a table to get people interested in becoming friends of the park. Kind of like, I guess you call it, like adopt the highway. Where you get people involved with the park, um, not necessarily for maintenance purposes. But just involvement, um, maybe picking up trash here once in a while, maybe. But just to get the, the community involved with the park, get more interest in the park.
What's the date of fishing?
Two twenty seven. I mean, I did, I did ask each of the parks to essentially, to put together a stakeholders directory. Which I think has been pretty much built now. And that was actually to be input to the friends of the parks, uh, because these are organizations that are already involved at your park. There's lots of them at Old Setlers, and there's several at Miles Kimmery and West of Veronica Valley, so. But I like the idea, cause I mean, Keith, you told me an idea that you were gonna have like a booth where people could sign up as, to be, to be friends of the park.
Yeah, if they're interested to be in a, a friends of the park, either committee or just a gathering. That, we would give that opportunity, well, and we don't know what the interest would be. Like I say, we know of a couple people that like the idea, but again, liking the idea and. Being involved could be two different things.
I mean, my, my, my thoughts on that one a little weird, but I mean, we do have the, you know, the Old Setler annual picnic. On the first Sunday of August, we could do something similar there. If we wanted to essentially get a list of people interested in being friends of Old Setler's park. Uh, I don't know of an, I didn't, any, I, any event at Miles Kimmery that you could do something similar, but. But then, once we've come, and once we've got a group of people who say, yes, I wanna be a friend of the park, do we have things for them to do? Which leads me to poke at Jordan and to Patrick and say, you know, what, what things are we doing at the park or not doing at the park? That volunteer groups could pick up. And maybe work them into a friends activity stuff. I'm happy to see what they're thinking in this way going forward, send our, send our five-year plan to do this, so.
I just might add, I get, uh, I was talking to, uh, Dave Behrens yesterday, we've lined up a table, signs, tent form. And, uh, Dave's pretty excited, he's just going all the way. Yeah, he's, he's. At the end, that's kind of what you need, is, is somebody who's willing to step, step to the plate, drive that board. And Dave's our man.
And Dave's a big burger in Veronica Valley, is pretty much our designated burger location, so.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, uh, having that, um, job description sort of say like what exactly that means. Um, in conjunction with, you know, Jordan and Patrick's input.
We, at Old Setlers, we already have groups that pretty much are volunteering to do things. We have one like ladies group that does the, all the flower plantings and all the garden plantings. They're also maintaining the chapel, keeping it clean and having it open and whatnot for weddings and stuff, so. We got the Old Setlers Annual Picnic Committee that puts that on. There's another group that puts on the annual July 4th flag raising, so. We need as many volunteers or as many things, we kinda have stuff covered, but, let's see. I think we close that subject? So we're at, back to public comment, anyone wanting to make a public comment at this time? Any staff comments from Lauren? Commissioner comments, chairperson comments, anybody wanna make a comment? We're driven meeting. At four twenty five.
Thank you, guys, fix it around, watching the sausage.
Thank you for returning, Ted.